Anybody wants to call in, they're certainly welcome to. Agenda item number four, an ordinance authorizing the clerk treasurer to issue change order number one. Lori, read number.
Ordinance number forty, two thousand twenty, an ordinance authorizing the clerk treasurer to issue change order number one and final for the project known as two thousand twenty Street Improvements for Bryan North Industrial Park connecting Beaman Street and Page Street, Bryan, Ohio.
Good evening. Final quantities came in on this project and we were under on our estimate. And like I said, this is a decrease of two thousand one hundred forty-three dollars and seventy-two cents. We'd ask that you suspend this so we can get this project closed out.
I always like it when you come back with cost is less than what you had anticipated. So I would move that we suspend and accept this.
I'll second.
Rick?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Agenda item number five, an ordinance providing for the transfer of funds to the City of Bryan for the month ending October thirty-first, two thousand twenty.
Ordinance number forty-one, two thousand twenty, an ordinance providing for the transfer of funds for the City of Bryan for the month ending October thirty-first, two thousand twenty. This is a transfer request of five hundred thousand dollars from the one percent income tax fund to the one-on-one general fund for general spending purposes. A transfer of one hundred thousand dollars from the one percent income tax fund to the two oh three street department fund for general spending purposes. A transfer of six hundred and sixty dollars and fifty-one cents from the half percent income tax fund to the four fifteen South William Street Project Fund. A transfer of five thousand one hundred ten dollars and twenty cents from the five twenty-five Water Capital Reserve Fund to the four fifteen South William Street Project Fund, and those two amounts should close out the project. Total amount of transfer requested, six hundred five thousand seven hundred seventy dollars and seventy-one cents.
I'll motion to suspend.
I'll second.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Agenda item number six, an ordinance approving the conditional use in a C-one zoning district for a drive-through facility.
Ordinance number forty-two, two thousand twenty, an ordinance approving the conditional use in a C-one zoning district for a drive-through facility.
The bank commission met back on September twenty-first and with five other seven members present, voted unanimously to recommend the conditional use approval for a drive-through facility at ten twenty-two Center Street. This would be for Eric's ice cream.
Andy, how is that, how is that gonna work?
What was that?
How are they looking at, you know, the, the traffic flow for that drive-through? And is it gonna stay the same as it is now, or what are, what are they?
We are purchasing additional land from the Betts family and will be demoing the existing building and centering the building on the new site. And traffic pattern will be like any other fast food restaurant.
Okay.
So it'll be, it'll be much better.
Okay, good, good.
I want to make one minor correction. It's from the David Betts Double Play Diamond Betts Facility, not the Betts Family.
No, sorry.
Either way, I'm going to abstain on six and seven, but I did want to point that out.
Uh, I.
You should be okay with settling.
Yeah, that's, that's Main Street. That's not you.
Oh.
The next one. This one, yes.
Okay.
I move that we suspend.
I'll second.
Rick?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Abstain.
Motion to approve. I'll second then.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Abstain.
Item number seven.
Ordinance number forty-three, two thousand twenty, an ordinance approving the conditional use in a C-three zoning district for a drive-through facility.
Again, uh, bank commission met on September twenty-first for this and voted to recommend this conditional use for a drive-through. This is for, um, four oh two South Main Street, Jack's Corner Mark. Um, they want to put a drive-through window on the south side of the building. Um, currently they have, uh, leave a ice machine and something else there, but they'll already get that moved. But this would help them with the COVID regulations, keeping people from in and out of their building and help with their sales.
Andy, wasn't it a propane tank storage over there?
Uh, yes, I think it was. Um, there's also a kerosene pump there. Um, they will have to make provisions to protect that. Um, again, not very many big vehicles are gonna go through this, but you can, you can get a car on the south side of that building there and utilize the window.
So I'm assuming they'll come down the alley and then access it that way?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
I'll motion to suspend.
I'll second.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Motion to approve. I'll second.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Then item number eight, ordinance to vacate the thirty-foot Holly Street right-of-way between East South Street and South Boundary.
Ordinance number forty-four, two thousand twenty, an ordinance to vacate the thirty-foot Holly Street right-of-way between East South Street and the South Boundary of Paul Street.
Um, I received a petition from the budding property owners to vacate this thirty-foot Holly Street right-of-way. Um, bank commission met on September twenty-first and like I said, this right-of-way is all we're going right now. There's no utilities in it. Um, there was never additional right-of-way supplied to put a road in. Um, so they recommended that we vacate this and give it back to the budding owners.
I'll tell you, I had to look this up on Google Maps because. I'll move to suspend.
I'll second.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Hey, Andy, was there any conversation about that little segment of Paul Street that's looks like a vacant lot?
Um, we talked about it, but we still had utilities running down that, so we decided to keep that for now.
Okay.
If they wanna proceed further with that, they can come back at a later date.
Okay. Yeah, if there's utilities there, then. All right, thank you.
I'll motion to approve.
I'll second.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Thank you.
Gen item number nine, an ordinance providing for an annual appropriations for the City of Bryan for fiscal year ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty, and declaring an emergency. Lori?
Ordinance number forty-five, two thousand twenty, an ordinance providing for annual appropriations for the City of Bryan for the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty, and declaring an emergency. This is an appropriation request for one hundred thousand dollars for the revolving loan fund for an upcoming loan. A request for the local coronavirus relief fund miscellaneous reimbursements of one hundred forty-two thousand four hundred ninety-nine dollars and fifty-six cents. This is the second round of the CARES Act money, including the interest earned on the monies. A request for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to be appropriated through capital improvements for the amphitheater project, which will be coming, we assume, through the grant through the Ohio Facilities Commission soon. A request for sixty thousand dollars for landfill costs, which have increased this year partially due to the time period where they were not picking up the recycling and having to take that out to the landfill. That increased our costs. A request for thirty-five thousand dollars in the wastewater fund for wages. Several of the gentlemen have bumped up in their steps in addition to passing a new union contract where they had a significant pay increase. An request for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in appropriation for the health insurance. We have incurred higher health insurance experience this year than normal, and I am requesting additional appropriation to hopefully get us through fourth quarter. Total amount of appropriations requested, eight hundred thirty-seven thousand four hundred ninety-nine dollars and fifty-six cents.
Lori, how much did you say on the refuge collection?
I requested sixty thousand dollars.
Okay. I thought you said fifty, and I thought that isn't what my paper says.
Probably my math, Judy, sorry.
That's why I wanted to make sure.
Is that, Lori, I just happened to think of this, so excuse the question. If you want more time to think about it, that's fine. Um, but it just dawned on me, is that sixty thousand dollars since we, due to COVID, we couldn't do the recycling, we had to take it to the landfill? Is that COVID reimbursable, do you think?
Um, that's a good question, but I would honestly say probably not because that would be revenue replacement.
Okay.
And I'm not allowed to do a revenue replace.
Oh, that's a good point. Thank you much. And, and the only reason I just happened to think of it was if it's a way we can get that paid, that'd be great. And then in the other sense, what scares me is the, the, the approach, the governmental approach to this, and I'm not speaking bad of it, it's just their approach, is that go ahead, ask for the money, we'll give you the money, then we'll audit you, find out that we don't want you to have that money, and we want you to pay it back. So under those conditions, I'm not so sure it would be a good idea anyway, but I thought I would ask. But that makes a lot of sense if it's gonna, certainly if it's gonna be, it was budgeted, and that would make it ineligible. I don't even want to go down that route, so thank you.
Tyson, I believe, is reviewing the contracts closely to ensure if there's anything we can do to recover some costs. So that is going to be reviewed and under review right now. But we do know that we had additional tonnage this year from the, from that time period. So I'm requesting that we have the appropriation. They have the money available in the fund right now to go ahead and do that, but I do believe that'll come under further review.
Okay.
In addition, I, I like the way you're thinking with regard to the CARES Act because I will tell you that no one's more nervous than I am, as well as every other fiscal officer and municipal.
I think every municipality is, absolutely.
Um, it's, it's a little nerve-wracking with the CARES Act money on what we can spend it on and not knowing the guidance yet on how we're gonna get audited. I can tell you I'm on calls every single day, and the rules are changing all the time. So I will be glad when the money's locked up and we go forward and get, get the reports into the feds and wait and see what happens. I can tell you, we are also discussing it with our local auditors on a pretty regular basis. In fact, they contacted me today and said, what documentation do you have on X? So everybody's in the same boat, trying to make sure that i's are dotted and t's are crossed wherever we can.
And, and I can tell you, in participating and watching Lori in this process, I cannot tell you the countless days that have been spent on this money. You guys would be amazed at the amount of time that is spent, and everyone is doing their part, but especially Lori and her staff, in making sure that when we do figure out what the money is gonna be used for, to the benefit of the, of the City of Bryan as well, that we're gonna do everything we can to make sure that it's audit-proof, and if it's not, it's because somebody changed their mind after they made the rules. That's just the truth of it. Lori has been working so hard to make sure that all the documentation is there. She's communicated. Um, you know, I called Ohio Municipal League today about one of the things we're gonna bring to you because there was initially, they said, no, you can't. The US Treasury has changed their mind at the end of the ballgame, which is irritating because, quite frankly, it would have saved us all those days of hours if they would have just gone this way in the beginning. Um, but Lori's gonna do everything she can. I'd also like to congratulate her now, 'cause I know, you guys know this, she passed her tenth perfect audit. That makes her even more nervous for next year. Um, but we're all gonna hang in and do our best work to get her through that one.
Don't want to be ten for eleven, huh?
Every year she's nervous, next year she has a reason to be, to be honest. The rules keep changing.
Well, I think, I think it speaks volumes if you talk, which I have talked to, read about, what else? Hear from the variety of villages and municipalities in our area. They are all nervous, some to the extent that they're not even applying because, A, it's too much time, energy, and effort, and work, B, they don't want it reneged. So I do, I also applaud you and your staff for doing this. It's good for Bryan. Um, it's a little bit risky, but I think, I think we've done everything, that's a King's we. You have done everything and your staff possible to keep that conservative and protected. And I appreciate that. Thank you.
Well, it takes a village, 'cause I'm, I'm gonna tell you, I run to Rhonda and the mayor on a regular basis and say, please review these documents as fast as possible. I've gotta have an answer on this. Um, or are we willing to go out and take a look at this item and see if this is something we can get in? Because mind you, these goods and services have to be purchased on or before for rounds one and two, October twentieth. They've got to be encumbered. And even if you get a service, it's gotta be in place by December thirtieth. And you guys know government. I mean, it takes us a while if we're gonna, if we're gonna bid out a project or anything else, those things take time. And we want to spend the money as wisely as possible for everyone in the city. Those are tax dollars coming in from the Fed, and we want to make sure it's spent appropriately. Um, so again, Rhonda and the mayor, in addition to all the department heads, especially Chief Siders and Chief Chappa, they have gone out of their way, a large segment of this money, and I think, I think we would all concur that a large segment of this money is for our emergency responders and equipment and utensils and tools and items that are necessary for them to do their jobs to the best of their ability. They are essential, they're dedicated, they are substantial, and their, their jobs changed dramatically because of COVID. And we have documented it right and left because it is presumed that they are essential for this COVID money. So we've tried to document it right and left, and the chiefs have come in in a great way with all the documentation they've had to give out to their staff to keep everybody safe and, and our citizens safe. So.
Yeah, I know I've said it before, but the chief, both chiefs were the county's representation for the Emergency Operations Center, which not only means that they were on twice-a-week calls, but they were then distributing that information throughout their chiefs throughout the county. Um, they also were creating standard of operation guidelines for other departments and our own. In a pandemic that only happens once every hundred years, there's no cheat sheet for that. You have to think of everything, and they really did that work, and they did it well, and they did it in a calm way, and they adjusted when they needed to, and really were substantially dedicated to this pandemic. So I appreciate that. I know we all do. The other thing I wanted to talk about in this appropriation, that amphitheater, that hundred and fifty thousand dollars, the two thousand twenty group pursued a grant through the state. So we are a pass-through. We're gonna ask that you allow us to appropriate that, but that's actually gonna then be sent back to the two thousand twenty group because that was their fundraising.
Right.
But the state has to use a government entity for that.
I'll motion to suspend.
I'll second. Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Motion to approve?
I'll second.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Thank you.
Then item number ten, a resolution, number eight.
Resolution number thirty-four, two thousand twenty, a resolution passed by the City of Bryan recommending that funds from the County Coronavirus Relief Distribution Fund will be utilized to cover costs for the employees' salaries and benefits of the Bryan Police Department, Police Dispatch, and the Fire Department as employees substantially dedicated to the COVID-nineteen public health crisis during the period between March first, two thousand twenty, and December thirtieth, two thousand twenty, and declaring an emergency.
So again, counsel, as we've spoken on numerous occasions, Fire and Dispatch have been substantially dedicated to the COVID relief efforts, public health crisis, and we are asking that you agree and pass this legislation to create this status of substantially dedicated. Anything else? Do you want to add anything, Lori or Rhonda?
Um, I guess if we want to talk a little bit about the CARES Act money, we are looking to use a large portion of the money on the wages and benefits for police and fire. It won't exceed fifty percent of their total wages and benefits. Um, in addition, I should, I could go ahead and list just for your benefit the items that we have already purchased through the CARES Act money, and that would include two COVID police cars were purchased with CARES Act money. It would include two UV machines which sanitize each of our buildings. There's one downtown, and there's one out in this building as well. A temperature check machine, as well as an emergency response vehicle for the Fire Department. And those items, we did through Ohio Budget and Management, contacted them on all items with the exception of the COVID cars, and that is an item that is being looked at by multiple entities because it's running through so many entities in the state of Ohio to get COVID police cars and make them sanitary. So with this act, this will take care of spending the first two rounds of the CARES Act money. There is a third round to come. Um, if we decide to go ahead with it, and I presume we will, we will probably allocate the third round to, again, wages for police and fire. It will help to assist in the general fund and the Fire Department Fund and cover those substantially dedicated workers.
Good.
I'll motion to suspend.
I'll second.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Motion to approve. I'll second.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Then item number eleven, a resolution to accept donation from Fountain City Amphitheater.
Resolution number thirty-five, two thousand twenty, a resolution to accept a donation of the Fountain City Amphitheater from the Bryan Area Foundation Project Two Thousand Twenty Club to the City of Bryan.
Yes, counsel, you have been presented with a resolution. The Two Thousand Twenty Club has proudly completed the Fountain City Amphitheater, and all of the site work should be done by that October fourteenth date. So they would like counsel to accept that donation into the Parks Department prior to Matt Hammitt coming for his concert put on by the Bard family. That way, our ownership takes over before that event so that we can provide restrooms, security, anything they need for that. We're very grateful for the group of individuals that so many years ago invested money on a continual annual basis, and they have really worked hard in the last two years to try to find a good project with a lot of community input, and I think that they are very proud, they should be, that this project is at completion, and we are certainly grateful and excited to have this in our city parks.
I'll motion to suspend.
I'll second.
Mary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Then item number twelve, a resolution to authorize the mayor to accept a grant, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Resolution number thirty-six, two thousand twenty, a resolution to authorize the mayor to accept a grant of one hundred fifty thousand dollars from the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission for the Fountain City Amphitheater.
Yes, counsel, again, as I mentioned with the appropriation, we will be used as a pass-through. Um, the state needs us to sign this contract. However, if you look, it was a very extensive contract that came sometime Friday afternoon, so we've been working very hard to work and tweak out the details. There were some areas of concern that I reached out to the state on and got some email clarification that would be placed in the file, but basically the totality of this contract is, the City of Bryan promises to use this facility, not demolish this facility, and not change its cultural use for ten years. If we would do that, we would have to pay the state bank back the one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, I don't see any reason why we would demolish an amphitheater ten years after its use. I don't see any reason why we would stop providing the public access to it. So I think it's safe for us to go ahead and, and authorize the signing of this contract so that we can get the money from the state and then in turn give it back to the Bryan Area Foundation for those two thousand twenty funds.
I'll move that we suspend.
I'll second.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Judy?
That was Mary.
I'm sorry.
Mary.
Mary?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
I was blocking you. I apologize.
It's hard to tell. Nobody's mouth, you can't see anything, so I'm sorry.
Then item number thirteen, planning and zoning appointment.
Yes, counsel, as you are aware, we had two openings in the Planning and Zoning Department. Mark Marilot and Nikki Morneke had resigned. I appreciate their years of service, but I would happily like to recommend that you appoint Doug Johnson and Tommy Moore to the Planning and Zoning Commission in their place. As we've discussed, we are going to be redoing and updating the planning and zoning code, and it would be great to have these two with their government experience be history for us and provide needed background while we're doing that. So I would respectfully request, all right, you can do it one at a time or at the same time, but I would request that you accept both.
I make a motion to approve both of them.
I'll second. Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Thank you.
Then the item fourteen, contractual wage increase, the Police Department.
Good evening. I'm here tonight to request Mason's luck be put to, um, the contractual five-year rate. Mason completed his fifth year of service with the Police Department. And he is able to move, yeah, able to be moved up according to the contract.
I'll motion to approve.
I'll second.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Thank you.
Fire Department probation status?
Good evening, counsel. Um, you have before you firefighter Devin Johnson. Devin has or will be completing his one-year probation with the city on Thursday, and Devin's done a real good job for us. I would like to move him, with your permission, to regular status.
I'll motion to approve.
I'll second.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, Mr. Betts, when you go around the room, could you actually ask for Ben Dominic first?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you. Not to mess you up, but he has something to say.
It's not, not a problem, 'cause I always ask for city employees and/or BPA employees. Ben, would you like to say something?
Absolutely. Good evening, counsel. Um, at the last council meeting, there were some questions in reference to Halloween and the Community Halloween event that we typically hosted, the Ice Rink. Um, I'm sure you've probably figured out by now, but we're not gonna be able to do a normal Halloween like we typically do. But we have come up with an idea that would, would be something for the kids to participate in, to hopefully provide some normalcy to the Halloween activities. Um, in front of you on your screen, you should see, um, our Community Halloween drive-through event, and then kind of listed below, um, not necessarily some rules, but some, the way we're gonna kind of operate it. Um, our plan is to host on Saturday, October thirty-first, from one PM to two PM. Um, the event will The event will still be for kids, fourth grade and under. You're going to enter Recreation Park off of Center Street, on to Mayberry Drive. You will follow Mayberry Drive around to New Dale. During the event, this area will be a one-way traffic flow. We ask that the participants stay in their car. We ask that the kids be in costume. Once you reach New Dale, we'll have various pieces of equipment along with volunteers that will be dressed up in Halloween attire. At the end of the route, we will then hand out a bag full of treats to each car or to each participant in the car. And obviously, when we do this, we'll be following all of the COVID guidelines that are set forth. The other thing to keep in mind is, we will then, later in the evening, the community trick-or-treat will take place that evening on Saturday, October 31st, from 5:00 p.m. to 6:30 p. or, I'm sorry, from 5:00 p.m. to 6:30 p.m. Also, as you can see in front of you, you will see a map that kind of lays out how we plan for this to happen. I apologize, it maybe is sideways on your screen, but I can get you a copy so you can kind of look at it the other way. But it's just outlining that you'll enter on Center Street. You'll kind of follow the arrows along there. You see where it says start. Down, New Dale Drive will be lined up with different various pieces of equipment. And then hopefully some NHS kids. We've reached out to some people that will be dressed up in costume, waving along that lines. And then when you get to the end of New Dale there by the tennis courts, the kids will receive their bag of prepackaged treats from the City of Bryan.
And counsel, I would like to commend Ben and his staff, especially Cindy. They really adjusted what was normal and what was a well-oiled machine, and I think have created something that will be really great for the kids. As many of you know, the PTO usually has a touch-a-truck event. Well, we're kind of bringing that to them without them touching the truck. All of those utility trucks are going to be available, the street department, the fire truck, for the kids to drive through and see. Cindy is individually stuffing 1,000 bags of candy for these kids and really has it down to a science and knows how many a day she has to do. The NHS kids are still involved. We reached out to Spangler, Diana Ashoven, the Drum Man and his new vehicle are going to be there too. So we're hoping it's kind of a fun route for these kids to go through because they are missing some of the normalcy that we provide. And I just want to thank Ben for thinking outside of the box quickly and getting an idea that has passed the Health Commissioner and gotten the approval for. So, thank you, Ben.
Great job, Ben.
Thanks, Ben.
Absolutely.
Very nice, very nice. Are the treats being donated?
Some are. Typically, the Parks Department does purchase some of the candy. Ben, do you want to speak more specifically to that?
I mean, my question really is, do you need some assistance? Is there some assistance from the general public?
Typically, we do donation letters. I'm not sure those went out because of the late change. Ben, do you know?
What we did is, we backed off on some of the donation letters. We purchased all of our candy local. And then the actual treat bags, we ordered from like Oriental Trading or something like that. And they're a drawstring, but everything is, as I said, prepackaged. So there's no issues as far as COVID or anything like that goes.
Now, Ben, John was asking if we were running low on funds for this.
I think we're in pretty good shape. But I will definitely let you know as we get a little bit farther down the road as to where we sit financially.
Well, one of the things I was thinking of is that Spanglers is coming out with their new line Fusion? Is it Fu- Fusion? Oh, come on, people, want to read the paper? Yeah, it's a candy, it's like a sucker, and it's called, I think it's called Fusion. Is that possible, Ben, for, I mean, could someone donate money to Spanglers to provide that to the kids? It seems like that would help with marketing, wouldn't it?
We certainly can talk about that. One, we wanted to make one contact point for these kids, so one bag for each child. We didn't want a bunch of groups handing out things and stopping the line and in contact spreading. But I do know that we have purchased Dum Dums and Safety Pops. One of the things that, this is for fourth grade and under, and so we try to make sure that the candy is appropriate for that age. So while the Fusion's good for a fourth grader, probably not for like a three-year-old.
I don't know that, but okay.
Does that make sense? I don't know, that's my guess.
It's okay, I'm not, I'm just interested in knowing how we can help the community, Spanglers, and the kid all at once, that's all. If there's something, Ben, let me know, how's that?
I definitely will do that if we find a need. And you guys are always welcome to be part of the event. If you want to dress up in costume, if you just want to come out and be part of the day, you're more than welcome to join us. You know, at this point, I think Cindy and myself and our staff and all the departments have been more than willing to help with equipment and things like that. I think we're in pretty good shape. But if something were to change, or, you know, we got to kind of adapt on the fly, I will definitely reach out and let counsel know kind of where we're at.
Appreciate that, and thank you so much. It's a great idea, absolutely great. Thank you. Are there other employees, city employees, that have anything they'd like to state? Or BPA, any of them are on or interested? If not, I'm starting with Mary.
Okay, that's great. I would actually like to thank the 2020 group for the amphitheater, really appreciate it. It looks beautiful out there, can't wait to see it completed. I also want to congratulate Lori on the 10th perfect audit, congratulations. That's quite an accomplishment, I can't wait to hear about the 11th.
Me too.
I also thank Ben and his team for the Halloween party. I know you're doing a lot to get that done, and I appreciate you going through the efforts to be COVID compliant. And everyone else have a lovely evening.
Rick?
Okay, well, I appreciate Mary leaving a little meat on the bone there, so I had some things to talk about. But I want to ditto the things that she said. I also want to mention that I appreciate, I want to thank the Marathon at the Corner of Main and Wilson, along with Eric's Ice Cream for investing in City of Bryan, because this is, these are tough times, and it's very, very fulfilling to see that we're still investing in our city and we have a lot of confidence in our comeback. And so I appreciate that. And I also want to congratulate Mason and Devin on their promotions.
Ms. Judy?
Well, they looked right at my notes for both of them. The only other one that I had down was to Doug Johnson and Tommy Moore on the being new members of the Zoning Commission and welcome aboard. And everybody have a safe evening.
Jim?
I just want to echo all their statements, that's exactly what I was going to say.
Now you know how Mary feels, right?
Yeah. Movie night, Saturday night.
Who's on my notes, sir?
Ah, I'm sorry.
Oh, I forgot that one.
Everybody have a good night, thank you.
Rhonda? Lori?
No, sir, thank you.
And I just want to say, and it was very good, so don't take this the wrong way, that's the most I've heard you talk in the three and a half years I've been here. And it was all very much needed and appreciated. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, I have quite a few things, but they're all good. One, I've worked with the county on the back end for their Williams County Small Business Grants of up to $5,000 through CARES Act money. I would encourage all eligible businesses to apply. They are specifically looking for reimbursement for mortgage and rent if you were closed, utilities. They cannot, again, we can't replace revenue, but of some of the bills that were due when you had to be closed, they're very interested in that and reimbursement. We talked to a lot of people. At one point, there was going to be a City of Bryan one joint with them. Accounting-wise, it did not work out. The two entities can't really be married with the CARES Act money. They have not had a ton of applications. I spoke to Commissioner Rummel today, he's hoping for more. So again, if you're a small business, I even told Williams County Little Theater, they asked if they qualified, they do. There is a scale, though. You know, certain businesses are going to rank higher just in the nature of what they do. But we want to make sure every eligible business in Bryan and in Williams County applies. And then that process will be, through a team of us, will kind of evaluate, and then the commissioners will essentially have the final word on what qualifies and what doesn't because they're going to go through the audit process, not me. So want to make that clear, that it just seemed like a better idea. We checked, I mean, we actually worked with Mommy Valley, and there is an employee there that is a rock star and within days had a lot of really good information. But we just found that a lot of places were doing county only because of some of the restriction changes, so we followed suit with that as well. Henry County and Defiance County did theirs. Dora, I got an email about four o'clock today that the Dora was approved for the City of Bryan. So that's very exciting news. And now I can get started on conversations about the committee and then also signs with the Engineering Department to see how many we need and where we're going to place them. So we're in the beginning stages of that, but happy to announce that the state has approved it. And that's good news for our business owners for that January 1 date. There is a movie night, and I will tell you that I'm completely out of practice with BMU and recording interviews. And poor Chris Bryce and Eric Kerman had some major editing to do, but they asked me to do a little promo video for them yesterday. And we did that in the ECNX, and I had props and everything, and we scared AJ Nowaczek at the Board of Elections because he thought it was CNN. So anyway, it was a great time, it was a great time. But I felt bad because I'm really out of practice from the videoing. We haven't done anything since before COVID. So I appreciate them including me on that, and I hope that you would join Saturday night at dusk. The first movie is Transylvania, the second is Twister. In between that will be a little bit of a public power trivia during the intermission. Pences Candy will be here, the Chamber has donated their restroom for the group to use. And it's a free will donation, and that money goes to NOCAP, which helps for people that are in need to pay their delinquent utility bills. So it's a really great cause, and it'll all go towards that Good Neighbors Fund that's administered through NOCAP. So the other thing I will be sending you, when I get the official announcement, there will be a dedication date with the amphitheater, and I want to make sure you all know. I think they're looking at a weekday. And then again, on the 17th, Matt Hammett will be here, former lead singer of Sanctus Real. And you are welcome to join at 7:00 p.m. for that concert. Make sure you bring your blankets and your lawn chairs. But it'll be a really great opening for the amphitheater. And I appreciate all of you because we had a whole lot to digest tonight, and you did very well, and I appreciate your engagement in it.
I'd like to thank all those people that are leaving for their service that they provide. Not thank you for leaving, thank you for your service, for those people who are leaving their positions. I too want to thank or welcome Tommy and Doug. I think that's a great match, quite frankly. It's going to be real helpful for planning and zoning. And I really look forward to Doug's wife making some Texas sheet cake for all of us. Anytime that you would like. Also, I'd like to recognize Norm for his retirement that's coming up. And all the, I think it's well over 30 years, isn't it? 30, 30-some years? Thank you for all your service to the City of Bryan. Also, for all those who have already been recognized for your advancements. That's a great thing. I'd also like to thank the Chamber and all those volunteers, who I saw some as I drove by at the end, collecting cones, collecting a variety of things. And it just reminded me how much effort it takes to put something like that on, especially when it was probably, what, two, three times the size as normal. There's a lot of people there and a lot of vendors. So kudos to the Chamber, to the Fall Fest. Also, to the Bryan Area Foundation for their vision. And I want to specifically point out, because I remember years ago how it came about, Phil Ennin, who specifically stated, "We need to start with some money and watch it grow so that we can get something." We are now living that life, okay? The amphitheater is now that vision of quite a while ago. So I want to thank the Bryan Area Foundation and Phil specifically. The last thing is, I would like to emphasize the mayor's executive session comments. We are a small, well-connected, wait a minute, I need to watch that, don't I? Yes. I would like to just emphasize her comments on meetings and how we address those meetings. And that's it.
Thank you.
Yeah. So at this point in time, unless there's something else, thank you for looking to your right, that caught me, I appreciate that.
Sure.
If there's no other, nothing else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make motion.
I'll second.
Mary?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.